I went that way to see what was going on.
Good evening, this is the November fourteenth, 2018 meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'd like to begin with approval of the minutes from September twenty-sixth. It's been awhile since we've had a meeting up here, so, are there any additions, corrections? Everybody okay? Anybody want to make?
Move to approve.
Okay, thank you, Rob.
Second.
Second, thank you Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? Okay, Matt's approved. Is item two, is there any correspondence from staff this evening?
Nothing from staff this evening.
Thank you, Mike. Joel, Transportation Commission meeting report, do you have any updates for us?
Transportation Commission met last week, two items of interest. One, we spent some time discussing issues of crosswalks on South Jackson. Certainly, there's a problem between gritmen and their parking lot across Jackson, but there's also problems at the intersection between the couple, where the couplets come together and head on south.
On the south end, yeah.
Yeah. We sent a resolution to council suggesting that there should be a study of possibilities of, have staff do a study of possibilities of crosswalks, and also involve the state since that's a state highway. We also spent some time talking about the new bike paths, which have appeared over the last several weeks on Moscow streets. The, a number of the paths had to be modified from what had originally been planned, given the realities of width of right-of-way, width of street, so we went through those, and that's about it. There will be another transportation meeting on the second Tuesday of December in this room at four o'clock.
Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Well, my question is, would their study expand to the north couplet? Because there are problems crossing on first and on second.
Well.
As a pedestrian, I can say that, I do that almost every day, and I see a lot of near misses.
Okay, I can bring that to the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Mike, do you recall that there was some conversation about an underpass?
Yes.
That came up?
Yes, and that is, that is still on the plan.
Okay.
Underpass.
To have a underpass under ninety-five south, basically similar to what was done on the Troy Highway. There's room under the existing bridge to put a path down there. Of course, it will not be functional at high water.
Right.
The same as the other one.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's an intermittent underpass.
And it doesn't solve the gritmen problem particularly, because they need some.
No, no.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Okay. Item four is public comment, it's an opportunity for members of the public to come and talk to us about things that might be on your mind that are not currently on the agenda tonight or before us. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come up and speak during this open comment period? Okay, well, it's, I guess if not, we'll move on to public hearing, and Mike Ray is going to begin by giving us a presentation.
So before you tonight, we have a public hearing for a proposed rezone at twenty-three-fifty Trail Road. It's in the area City Impact. The applicant Darrell Paul is proposing to rezone a four-point-seven acre parcel, proposing to rezone from the Ag Forest Zone, which it's currently in, to the Farm Ranch and Outdoor Recreation Zone, the FR Zone. So per our Area City Impact Agreement, Planning and Zoning Commission conducts the public hearing and then forwards a recommendation on to Leittau County, and Leittau County makes the final decision on the proposed rezone request, so. This is the property, you can see Mountain View Road heading north-south here, further down to the south is where it makes the ninety, my Mountain View Park, Trail Road heading east-west with frontage on this property, and so this is the property outlined in red, four-point-seven acres to the north of Trail Road there. Closer view of the area, primarily surrounded by agricultural and rural residential lands, so we've got single-family dwellings that exist to the east, to the west, and to the north, and then primarily agricultural land to the south and to the east. This is the nineteen-ninety-nine Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map, so the city and the county are currently in negotiations to update the Area City Impact Agreement, so hopefully we'll be adopting our two thousand and nine Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map, which we're in the process of updating right now, and so, but right now, we're going off of the nineteen-ninety-nine, and it has this property designated as agricultural, so that's the gray hue that you see on the screen, and then low-density residential is the purple to the south there. Taking a look at our major streets plan, so again, this is the nineteen-ninety-nine Comprehensive Plan. It's a little hard to read with the, just the black and the gray, but you can see the proposed arterials here and the collectors. The arterials are a little bit, I think, wider of a font as far as the road width, but you can see Trail Road here, which is designated as a collector by that nineteen-ninety-nine thoroughfare plan. We do have in the two thousand and nine comp plan as being a minor arterial. So looking at Comprehensive Plan, like I mentioned before, it's agricultural on the nineteen-ninety-nine comp plan land use map. What that says is agricultural designated areas are farming, ranching, forestry activity areas, or land suited best thereto located either within or adjacent to the city boundary, or outside the city boundary but within the area City Impact. Lands within this designation shall remain primarily undeveloped except for single-family dwellings and accessory buildings on large lots, and except for buildings related to agricultural ranching, forestry uses, and other uses which do not conflict with the rural aspects of the uses previously specified. And just to take a look at the two thousand and nine comp plan, also agricultural designation, it's intended to allow continued use of agricultural activities and limited residential development at very low densities. Residential development options allow septic well and septic public water where applicable, of course. Very low densities, consistent with intended agricultural character, and then it points us to the Ag Forest and Farm Ranch designations as appropriate for that comp plan designation. So that brings us to the current zoning of the property and the surrounding area. You can see this is the Area City Impact Boundary here, this light blue line that jogs over, so really, on the outskirts of the Area City Impact, the light greenish color is, which includes all this area within the Area City Impact, is Ag Forest Zone. So the proposal would be to just rezone this property to Farm Ranch, and it would just be the four-point-seven acre parcel here. And looking at what our zoning code says about Farm Ranch and Outdoor Recreation, "The purpose is to permit current agricultural outdoor recreation and other open land uses to be maintained, at the same time to set minimum standards for the development of similar new uses in order that this open zoning district be protected against spasmodic, disorderly, and indiscriminate development until which time, as another appropriate use of the land in this zoning district has been determined." Minimum lot area is three acres, and the width is one hundred and twenty-five feet. This is the record of survey that was submitted for this property, so you can see the lot width is about three hundred and twenty-four feet here adjacent to Trail Road. There is a fifty-foot easement, so within the county, everybody owns adjacent property to the middle of the roadway, and then they have the public roadway, which has been dedicated through an easement, whereas the city, we have dedicated right-of-way, where the city has ownership of that, and so it's a little bit different of a mechanism in the county, but you can see the fifty-foot wide Trail Road access easement that goes in front of the property, and so we'll talk about a recommended condition from Public Works here in a second. But there is an existing barn on this property, and that existing barn, you know, of course, would be grandfathered in, but currently meets all setback requirements. So staff recommends the City Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission conduct the public hearing and put forth a recommendation of approval to the proposed rezone of Leittau County with one condition, and that condition's coming from Public Works Department, that the applicant dedicate sufficient right-of-way along the full frontage of the property to provide thirty-five feet of road width north of the existing center line of Trail Road to meet the existing collector street standard. So what that would mean would just be an additional ten feet into the property, which would be dedicated for a future roadway. The intent is if the Trail Road ever gets upgraded to a standard, which is a collector status, that there'd be sufficient right-of-way enough to construct that street standard, and so that'd be the recommendation coming from Public Works on that, and so I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions for Mike? Hey, I guess not, Mike, so, go ahead and open the public hearing. So at this point, we're opening the public hearing, and that provides opportunities for members of the public to come up and speak in favor or against this proposal, but we begin with the applicant, if possible, is the applicant here, or representative? Thank you, and so please state your name, your address, and in general, comments under, you know, around three minutes or so, but in your case, maybe a little longer, so.
My name is Aaron Repke, I am an attorney here on behalf of Darrell Paul. Address is five-thirty South Asbury Street, and Mr. Ray did a nice job summarizing the proposal, so my comments will be brief. Really, the purpose of our request for rezone is to allow for a construction of a residential, single-family residence upon the lot, and right now, the parcel is currently designated Ag Forest. It's just under five acres, so it's a tough size to make productive agricultural use of. The other thing that makes a lot of sense about this proposal is it's bringing it into an existing pattern of development in the area. As you can see, there's similar, similarly sized parcels adjoining this that are rural residential, and so this kind of brings, brings it in compliance with the surrounding area and provides a nice little neighborhood of rural residential property out there just off Trail Road and Mountain View. Really, everything else that I had to say, Mike touched on, so I'm happy to answer any questions, too.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions? Rob?
So the existing parcel, or the part that is not being requested for rezone, that will remain Ag, then?
Which parcel are you talking about?
Well, the one where the house and the other barn, the one to the, to the east, is that, has that already been rezoned, or is?
That's already been rezoned, and I believe that's rural residential.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you say that, Mike? Did you point that out?
Um, it's.
That the other piece has already been rezoned?
They're surrounded by Ag Forest, so this is the only property that'd be proposed to be rezoned to Farm Ranch.
And that's because it's a carryover from?
Those are just pre-existing lots that were developed, yeah.
But I, I kind of had the same question as Nell. So the other piece, the one that is to, where we've got the red outline, to the east of that, that is already, has already been rezoned, that piece of it?
That's still Ag Forest, but that's under different ownership, so that was divided at some point earlier. The problem is, the minimum lot size for Ag Forest is forty acres, and so in order to be able to build a single-family dwelling, they'd have to rezone it to a Farm Ranch designation, which only has a three-acre minimum lot size.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that it was a separate ownership, okay.
So I guess the, the east piece of land had been re-designated before the county changed its guidelines.
Right, that's what it seems like, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's an older house there, it just recently went through an addition, but yeah, it predated.
Right, right, I got it.
Yeah, so just to summarize what's driving this request is, is a rezone in order to build single-family residence on the parcel.
So it's not a subdivision, it's just a rezone?
Yeah.
So, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is an opportunity for anyone else who would like to come up and speak on behalf, or against, or just questions? Anybody out there? No? All right, well, given that, we will close the public hearing, and just have a discussion among ourselves to see if, where we want to go from here.
Seems fitting with the neighboring parcels, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So does anybody want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll move that we approve, or recommend to the county approval of the rezone as requested.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mike and Rob?
We need the, the Public Works criteria on there, too.
Oh, right, thank you for that. So, do you want to add the public?
With the condition that Public Works has indicated for extension of the right-of-way to thirty-five feet, thanks.
Thank you, Victor. Yeah, and, and is, are you okay with seconding that?
Absolutely.
As stated? Okay, anybody? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? Okay, well, do we need to do relevant criteria for this? Okay, so we need a motion and that.
I'll move that staff prepare relevant criterion standards for our recommendation for the rezone.
Okay, is there a second to Rob's motion?
Second.
Second, thank you, Nell, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. All right, thank you, that's, so.
Boy, that was easy.
Yeah, that was one of our easier, everything was this easy, right? All right, well, thank you. Okay, so our next item is, item six is the Comprehensive Plan Open House that we had a month ago, almost, in our, for our first October meeting, no, I mean, second October meeting, excuse me. So we're supposed to have a recap of the event, is, are you going to say anything first? Mike?
Yeah, I just thought, you know, we had decent turnout, I was impressed with how many commissioners ended up making it, and we received, you know, some comment cards, about seven or eight comment cards, and so we'll be reviewing those, and then we still have the comment period, which runs till the end of next week.
So it runs, do you have a date on that?
It ends the day after Thanksgiving, so it'll be next, I guess, the twenty-third.
Okay.
And then, so we'll review those the next week, and then I think we have a, our meeting the next, the following Wednesday, so we can review those comments and decide how we want to proceed at that point, so.
Okay. So, does anyone else have any comments to make?
Well, I just, do we then do a public hearing after we've considered the comments, or?
Yeah, it'd be a public hearing with a recommendation on to City Council, and then City Council would have to conduct their own public hearing.
Okay.
I had a quick question for you, Mike. I couldn't not find it on the website for where people could direct their comments to. Do you know if it's online?
Yeah, it's, it's, usually it gives my contact information to send those to me, but they're usually accessed off of our department's webpage, so if you go to Community Development, right.
Yeah, it always, we can talk about it afterwards, too, I just didn't find it easy to find online.
Yeah, there's a, in the planning, under Community Development, under Planning, there'll be a projects link, and if you click on that, that'll be a dedicated site.
So I guess. I would ask the question of those present who participated, if you had any recurring questions from members of the public that.
Didn't really hear, didn't seem.
We had almost more than enough.
You know, we brought things up to date, but it's hard to imagine that we have a sticky issue, and I, at least.
A lot more central on the site.
It was a vastly friendly night, so.
Because my curiosity, not having been on the commission when you actually did the, what we revised, and you must have gone through a similar process, was there more turnout for an open house? Joel, it would be the two of you, I think, who would have.
Well, sure.
I think we made more changes earlier.
You know, that when the, when the comp plan was done, and, and there was, especially early on, when there was discussion of ring roads and such, it got a lot of, there was quite a bit of discussion in the neighborhood, because as you look out past the area of impact, it brings, gets people excited, but I don't think we, you know, we didn't do anything to, to change that, and of course, since we've pulled the, since we've been required by law to pull the area of impact back quite close to the city limits, we don't really have a lot of big issues on that area either. Once we were kind of looking at a mile of area impact, it seemed like that, it got people worried. So we, I think, I think we're, it seemed like a happy midterm move.
So Mike, when would you anticipate that we would have a public hearing on it? I'm sorry, in?
Well, we would probably review, we wouldn't be in time for a December twelfth meeting, so it'd probably be the first meeting in January, I think is what we were targeting.
Okay, thank, all right. Well, moving on down the agenda, the next item is the subdivision code review by, and Michael will give a presentation on that.
So this is just picking up where we left off last meeting, we were talking about our upcoming subdivision code update, and we've gone through and spent quite a bit of time talking about kind of our lot-line adjustment, lot division, subdivision plat process, how we currently process those, and some of the issues with those. Not going to go back through those, but they were at the very beginning of the subdivision plat chapter. I think the only comment, you know, when we went, went through those before, was we had somehow reduced the amount of notice requirement from six-hundred to three-hundred, so I went back and changed that to, back to six-hundred, but other than that, I don't think I received any other comments as far as things that we wanted to see, you know, different with the proposal, so, but we can go back and go through those again if you want to, if, if you had some time to think it over and saw something different, but those have largely remained the same, except for that one change after the feedback, so we just kind of skimmed over kind of the subdivision design standards as we saw them laid out in the, in the update, and so I'll go through a little bit more detail on those standards, and we've got a draft proposal before you tonight, so you have some time to kind of follow along and go through that. I think it starts on, let's see, page nine. So, yep, subdivision design standards, gives a little bit of statement about purpose and applicability, subdivision and development name, just really want a, you know, a name that's easy for emergency response services, and a name of a subdivision that doesn't already have a similar name within the city. Street standards and access, so these are our, just, you know, pretty much specifying that, you know, it has to follow the adopted street standards that have been approved by resolution by council, that the engineering department works on, kind of lays out the streetlights, the cost of street name signs, kind of all the nitty-gritty details that are required of subdivision development that are required to be there, but we don't necessarily have those right now. Traffic signage, you know, laying out how that gets installed, and where you follow, manual and uniform traffic control device, which is the universal device indicator as far as traffic control signs in the United States. Horizontal and vertical alignments of city streets shall generally conform to ASHTO standards, unless otherwise approved by the city engineer, so our city engineering department handles the majority of these requirements. Brings us to kind of a number of access points, and so we didn't really talk about this a whole lot last time, but what we have here is, depending upon the number of dwellings or lots within a subdivision, we'd be proposing to have a minimum number of access points, and so, you know, it points to providing for kind of general traffic circulation, supporting the delivery of services, so emergency services, refuse services, mail services, shall meet the requirements of emergency service providers. So, you know, in all residential development, shall provide a minimum number of access points as follows, less than sixty dwelling units, one access point, sixty to one hundred and twenty, two access points, more than one hundred and twenty, no less than three access points.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
Do you know why those numbers are the way they are? They seem low to me, when you think of a normal gridded neighborhood, you know, sixty houses with one access point is a lot of houses, but only one. I'm just curious.
Yeah, you know, it was more or less just like a baseline, you, we can go through, you know, a few different scenarios to take a look at that, but, you know, just looking at some of our existing developments, you know, usually have, you know, a lot more access points, the, and this is, you know, meant to be a little on the conservative side, so we don't, you know, have some challenging topography, and, and there may be limited access, and so that's really where we, you know, had come up with these, these numbers as far as this threshold.
Mike?
Yeah.
Do other cities have similar rules?
Not every city, but yeah, there are, you know, quite a few that have similar requirements. You know, usually, you try to codify this stuff as much as possible, so it's not just creating requirements when you get to Planning and Zoning Commission or council, and so that's really why, you know, we're thinking of putting this into the code as far as, you know, having a mechanism to provide that number of access points, but also having a kind of a safety relief valve, that it may be reduced, you know, by either the city engineer or council, as long as there could be adequate delivery of city services and emergency response, and then provides a safe and efficient traffic circulation, and so really, those are the concerns, you know, your emergency response being required to go a significant greater of a distance, you know, having to drive around to that access point, if you have a one access point, having that blocked off and not being able to access, you know, those houses, you know, usually for ser, services as far as water and sewer, a lot of those have to have redundancy and have to be circulated through subdivisions, and so that's, you know, a part of it as well, but.
Because it seems like it truncates circulation with that minimum, I mean, it's, it's, arterial, I want to say arterializes, but I don't know how to say it. it. The circulation system kind of more like a trunk and a couple of branches instead of something that's a little finer grained. That's why I, you know.
Did, my question is, is this new? Is this something we've added? Did we have such a rule before?
No.
That's what I, that's why I'm questioning it.
Yeah. I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm not at all convinced about, I mean, if you think of a block in the city that has, let's just say, 10 houses on it, hey, it's got four access points the way I see it. And to have one access point for 60 seems to be asking for a long stringy development.
Long arterial with a couple of branches.
Unless I don't get it right.
Mike, would an example of this be like behind McDonald's school? Where you would have, is it Hillcrest that hits Neyman, correct?
Yeah.
And then the other access point hits D Street, correct? But there's probably more than 60 houses with two access, well, and lives there.
Yeah, I mean, usually it's intended, I mean, you have infill lots, and you're going to have, you know, meet this requirement, no problem. But you may have subdivisions on the outskirts of town, you know, as the city grows, that you, is this probably going to be more of a likelihood that you run into an issue where there may be only one access point, you know, like the Rolling Hills additions as they grow to the east, you know, you end up with lots of lots, but it may only be Third Street or Sixth Street that end up connecting to those lots. You go up Sixth Street, turns into Atani, you know, ends up Panorama neighborhood, you know, really you only have two ways to get out of there. It's, you know, the further up you go, you've got Sixth Street, you know, and Atani, Panorama, then it goes down to, ends up tying back into Robinson Park Road down there. But, you know, you have a large number of lots there that have minimal kind of access, access points. But, yeah, it's more of just a, kind of a new idea to put it in the code, and, you know, we just, that's why we brought it and put it in there to talk about it and see if it made sense, or, you know, we can bring back some examples of what that might look like, but yeah, more intended to apply to, well, apply to all subdivisions if it was adopted, but it'd be more intended to address some of the newer subdivisions as we grow on the outskirts of town, not necessarily the infill lots or subdivisions, because those would be fairly easy, they'd probably tie two streets together.
Victoria, and I know Mike had a question too.
My question, well, this is for minimums, so you can always have more. But the question I have in my mind is, if you had an emergency situation where you only had the one access point, if that access point was blocked, if you had, I don't know, a gas problem or something, then you don't have any access points because.
Or wildfire, if we ever have one.
In, in, emergency situations.
Yeah, usually those are the, the issues that you think about when you look at access points. I mean, it'd be similar to, you know, something else it would help with, I mean, we had, you know, Peekaboo Estates subdivision where the neighbors came out in opposition and wanted to put two cul-de-sacs there, you know, and that's not very, I mean, that's 22, 23 lots that were part of that subdivision, so it's still at a smaller scale. But, you know, they, they have two access points off of Slonaker and Landy Lane over there, and then it ties into Orchard, so that would pretty easily meet the, you know, one access point requirement. But it's for scenarios like that, which you, you know, there may be quite a bit of opposition to having the street go through, excess traffic on existing roadways, you know, a lot of those things that usually get quite a bit of public opposition to, just because it's going to increase, you know, they have a cul-de-sac right now, and nobody drives by it, and it's safe, and, and it's perceived that large number of vehicles going, you know, if the streets tie together and a large number of vehicles start going by there, then it's all of a sudden be, going to become unsafe. And so, you know, it's a, kind of a lot of different things that we were thinking about when we put that in there. But, you know, it may be, maybe less. I, I mean, like you said, 60 is, is a lot. We very rarely ever get subdivisions that have 60 lots within them. You know, it's usually done in phases, and so maybe you have a subdivision, but there's only 20 lots at a time, so.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, here we go, Joel, and then.
I guess I always thought that the presumption that we had was that subdivisions or neighborhoods were expected to have more than one access point. I, I guess I worry that, that stating it this way is, is giving license to, to do single access, and, and to me, 60 is rather large. Maybe I would be happier if, if the 60 were reduced. And I guess, single access ones are probably inevitable, given the way we develop here slowly, with an expected continuing second or third access point as things develop. I guess, I guess I worry about stating it this way.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of having the same problem, and I'm wondering if, maybe changing the language in item B, where it says maybe reduced, if it is adequate to ensure delivery, why don't we talk in terms of, could be expanded as well as reduced, if in the determination of the city engineer and council, that additional access points are necessary to ensure delivery of city services? Give, give some flexibility in there, so that depending on the circumstance, you don't have somebody comes back and said, well, we've only got 50 dwelling units, and I've made my one access. But in the determination of the city engineer, they may say, that's, that really is problematic for emergency access. And so give them the flexibility to require more if, if they need to, to, to meet these other requirements.
So like subsection C there?
Oh, may require.
I think it's probably saying.
Okay. So I just needed to read a little bit.
And Mike, you had.
That's why I rescinded my question, because I read C.
Oh, okay.
Mike, it'd be interesting to see some examples, because I think there's quite a few subdivisions that would probably fall into the 60 dwellings with one access, more than we think there is.
Does it achieve the connectivity goals that the comprehensive plan states when there's only one access point? That's one of my questions, I guess.
I'm, I'm confused about, I mean, imagine a dwelling, a subdivision that had no access point. Give me a break here. I mean, how can we, one, how many houses are on, were on Slonaker when, before it, before Little Lanny came in? That was a, that was a single road going down and back, had only had one access point, didn't it? It was a dead end deal. How many houses do you think were on Slonaker? Do you have a, was it?
There's not that many, I'd probably say 16, maybe.
Probably 20, you think?
Yeah, 16, 20 at, at most.
And, and that's a bad thing, to only that one access point. I mean, I think that's, imagine getting up in the morning and knowing that you don't have, you only have one way out of your subdivision. I'm, I'm, I have a hard time understanding why that one, it seems to me like we should start with two. Well, I mean, I mean, isn't that just like, I don't get it, Mike? One access point, what, what's, what's less than one? No one wants to be in a subdivision that doesn't have any access.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be improbable to do that. I mean, you would.
So how does it line up with your later kind of statement, or portions on street connectivity? That there was that ratio of one to 40? Does it kind of, how does it work with that?
Yeah, that, I mean, these are, you know, intended to provide access points, not necessarily, you know, this is access points from existing streets, not proposed streets. And so what we have for street connectivity is, you know, what some other communities do is a connectivity index, where you, it's just really a ratio of the number of lengths and the number of nodes, and it's ordered to promote more of a, you know, gridded street network that has connectivity within the subdivision, and as opposed to a subdivision that has strictly just dead end streets with cul-de-sacs. And so that's the intention there. You know, 14 street lengths, you know, each of these is a link, every section that comes to an intersection's a link, the nodes are, you know, each of these different intersections. So you have this connectivity ratio, which is just, you know, one divided by the other. And it says that you have to have a minimum of 1.4 unless specific, unique site conditions prohibit the achievement of such minimum index rating as approved by the city. So, you know, I mean, it's just dealing with our topography. A lot of times, you know, it may be that you are unable to avoid cul-de-sacs, and you have to have a cul-de-sac just because it's, the topography's too steep, and, and there's no way you can grade it out, so you could get a road down there. And so there are those circumstances, and that's what we have to deal with, you know, as we develop subdivisions. But this was just an attempt to have that connectivity and to maintain that within new subdivisions, and so we get the traffic dispersed and, and have, you know, less time for emergency services to respond in different areas of the city, and so.
Yeah, well, I mean, the one on the top obviously has two connection points, and the, the access points in the other one just has one, and it seems like almost there could be a cross east-west street system on, at least the one with the cul-de-sacs. If they can't do it at the end, they could at least do it, so that they're, but that still only provides, I guess, one access point.
Yeah, and that, that was the whole idea with the, you know, what we had before, as far as the, the number of access points, was to have, when you have a situation like this, you know, and you're over 60 lots within this subdivision, that there be something similar to what we have up here, where you connect it to that street again, and it's all tied together. So that was really our attempt. You know, we can tweak the numbers, if we don't like it, we can take it out, we could look at maybe doing something different. You know, it's really, it was really just for discussion.
My attention when I was reading it, thinking, oh, is this really achieving, you know, the connectivity goals we have in the comprehensive plan when there's only one access point? So, yes.
If we do use this diagram, particularly the upper one, would you label it so we understand what a link is? I can't tell you how many times I counted, and I couldn't get to 14, until you just now said that each one of those lines is a, is a link.
Sure, sure.
So maybe just label something so that we can relate the, I get the nodes, but I was counting more, well, doesn't matter, but if, maybe we could just label as an example so that we know what a link is.
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, I think the graphics eventually will get helpful when we figure out exactly what they, what they should be.
Links are just a piece of street between two, between the next intersection, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, that's what he.
I finally, finally figured it out.
But we, we say that, don't we have like a 600 foot? How long can a cul-de-sac be?
Well, block length is 660.
And so that can be, that could be more, 10 houses, easy, couldn't it? On that, on that, with that length?
Yeah, depending upon the zone, I mean, R1's 80 feet, R2 70, yeah.
We don't, that was a case of Slonaker, it was, it had pretty big lots.
Yeah. Yeah, they're all acre sized lots. I mean, even though it's not in a zone that requires acre size, they ended up plating them as acre sized lots. So we can, yeah, just, you know, why don't you think on this, and then we can, you know, I was planning on coming with some other examples, and we can look at those, and if we want, like something better, and want to go a different direction, or, you know, tweak the numbers a little bit, we can. This is more just laying it out there to, to start talking about it and thinking about what we want to do, so.
Okay.
I would, I would reiterate what you said, that the way it's laid out here, it almost suggests going with these minimums. I don't know how else to say that, that, it's like saying, you only have to do one, so don't do anymore. It's just the way, it's just the way it's laid out and phrased, you know, I mean, it would be illogical to do C, B, and A, but, but that would, that would at least stress that we're not trying to push the minimums, these are minimums, and you might likely need to go more than that. And you can't logically go C, B, A, you have to go A, B, C. But, but there's something about the way it is written that, that just lends itself to, to narrowing down to the minimum.
And in that case, it's really, you were saying, I think, Mike, right, that it's, in case there's a topographic issue, that it can't, something else can't be accommodated, but that might be the exception rather than the rule, I guess, and so how do we, you know, afford for the exception, but not make the rule suggest that everybody do that? I guess, is where, where it's going, so.
Okay.
One further comment.
Yes.
We really need to design this verbiage to deal with the fact that most subdivisions, or many subdivisions, end up with proposed future branches off to other subdivisions that are not there yet. Some of them may be likely within a year or so, others, others may be decades coming. And I think we, we need to somehow design this so that it, it recognizes that ultimately there will be more connections than there are now.
Which makes you wonder if there shouldn't be an adjective for access, proposed or possible, as a, as a, rather than just to make it so severe, I'm.
Or something like permissible, but not recommended.
I feel like I really need to think.
Yeah, yeah.
The 60 and the one just seem to be hard for me to swallow on. I, I want to, I'd like to test it out a little bit. I'll, I'll be ready to say more on our next meeting.
Yeah, well, I think Mike will too. Thank you.
So we're just carrying over kind of the maximum block length. We, we had it at 660 before, we're just going to retain 660 within the new draft. We did add cul-de-sac allowance length, so we just made that the same for the maximum block length. Before, we didn't really address cul-de-sac length, and so we would just make it the 660, similar to what we have done with our just city block length. Pedestrian walkways, talked a little about this last time, you know, really the goal is just to, you know, a lot of times we have areas within subdivisions that we're looking at, you know, making access easy to, so if you have a centralized park, and it's a lot faster to drive there, you know, we have a threshold here, propose that pedestrian walkway should generally be required where the pedestrian walkway would, would reduce the average travel distance of pedestrians by more than 50%, or where otherwise required by council to mitigate potential safety hazards. And so that's typically in the past, when we've, you know, tried to require pedestrian pathways, is, you know, looking at the travel distance for the average automobile compared to pedestrians. And so, you know, if it cut that in half, then generally pedestrian walkways through blocks are a good idea to include. And a lot of, you know, subdivision developers have actually gotten used to that and included those within the subdivision proposals, and we haven't had to require those as conditions. But it's just good, like I said before, to include it in the code. But it's just good, like I said before, to include it in the code, to have a standard there to, you know, direct council, planning and zoning, and, and the applicants to what the requirements are for pedestrian walkways. And then we've always kind of negotiated, you know, Public Parks and Rec Commission usually takes care of these walkways and they usually are required to plow the snow in the winter time, too. And so they usually want a sufficient width, you know, usually a paved surface with a shoulder on either side so they can push the snow in the winter time. And that's typically why they've stipulated how, how wide these are. We'd be proposing to have a right of way dedicated of 10 feet width and that, you know, sidewalk has to be constructed by the developer. If it's anticipated to have high bicycle use, should provide access to bike routes or separated pathway facilities. The minimum constructed width is eight feet on the bicycle path facilities. We go to the next section, which is lots, kind of goes through, you know, lot arrangement with logical and orderly development. Considerate of designated floodplains and wetlands that may be present in the subdivision development. Go through lot lines, you know, trying to make sure that those are at more right angles. Sometimes you don't have a choice, just because with our topography and, and the rolling hills and the curve, curvature of the streets, you may have issues there, but we're just stating that. Through lots should be avoided where practical, through the use of a rear alley or private drive access, alternate street layout or other means. Corner lots, trying to require those to be 10% larger than the minimum lot size of the applicable zone. So that is a, kind of a new proposal, mainly just because you have issues with setback requirements. So you have increased setbacks because you have, if you're on a corner lot, you have the front setback requirement, and then you also have a street side yard setback requirement. So always running into issues with people trying to fit a certain footprint of a house onto a corner lot and with the applied setbacks just becoming a challenge. And, and if we could head that off by requiring those to be 10% larger than the typical lot, then we'd have, you know, it'd be a lot easier to fit some of those houses on those lots and, and some of these subdivisions. So that's what we were thinking there. Flag lots, of course, are allowed. I think we're just going to point to the current section on flag lots. And then this was previously, I think we had struck it from this section. I, I still have it in the presentation, but before we went through required lot frontage, really that's just stipulated in another section of the zoning code, so we don't need to duplicate it within the subdivision portion. Next portion is parkland dedication. So we're largely, you know, carrying over what we have currently as far as the percentages of, of parkland to be dedicated. It's really dependent upon what zone you're in requires a certain percentage. And I think we've kept these relatively the, the same percentage as far as the net developable area for, for parkland dedication.
Wendy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And Mike, while we're on this, you know, we had talked at one point in time about one of our continuing education subjects would be this parkland and parkland dedication. And I'm wondering, as we're considering this particular section, if this wouldn't be an opportunity to hear from Parks and Rec and the commission and kind of have a conversation so that if there's any other appropriate changes that we might be able to make, now is the time to do it. And so I'm just wondering if we could potentially schedule something during one of our meetings to have them come in and talk with us.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, that's definitely the direction we should go.
Okay. Yeah, we can arrange that in one of our future meetings to have, have them come to, to talk about these things. And then I know another, you know, topic, I think, that's been on the council's mind has just been the fee in lieu of current fair market value of, of parkland being so low. And so I think that that'll probably be coincide with this discussion, you know, as well, so.
So I was trying to figure this out and I, maybe it's, but say you have a hundred thousand dollar lot, or whatever the market value is, 50,000, I don't know. I mean, you know, and so it's saying basically that the fee in lieu of would be 3% of that if you were in R1. I, I don't really understand what, what, I guess it's paragraph, I think I mean 5A, 5A, what it really is talking about. Is it referring back to this chart?
No, it's just the fair market value of the land that's being proposed. And so if there, if you look at the chart, say you have a subdivision and, you know, it's R1, you're required to provide 5% of the net developable area has to be parkland.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. I was reading it as, never mind. I got it, okay.
So that, that gives you, you know, the square footage or the acreage of the land that needs to be dedicated.
Okay.
And then they base how much that is off of the current fair market value of the land suitable for parkland. So I think it's really drastically undervalued because you can't build on it. They look at it as just land that's unbuildable, regardless of whether, you know, how large it is. Because, I mean, if you dedicate a parcel that meets lot sizes and you're able to build on it, it's going to be, yeah, 60, 80,000.
Right, right.
And then you have land that's unbuildable, well, that's a fraction of what a, a buildable parcel would be.
And is it usable as a park?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's got a value for a park, but you can't build on it. And so, because it's been dedicated to the city for parkland purposes. And so I think that's the issue, you know, our, our current valuation for acre is $13,500.
Which seems really low.
Which is really low. So, you know, at one point in time, I know our city attorney looked into it and we have a new city attorney now, so I, you know, I think that that conversation's going to be brought up again to see if we, you know, can get that increased as far as the fee in lieu of, so. Really, the only fee in lieu of's we see anymore are just the really small subdivisions, like the one on public, that we just had eight townhouses that were part of that. You know, it didn't make any sense. It was infill lot to require any type of parkland dedication. But I think the parkland, you know, fee in lieu of still came out to be 600, you know, which doesn't go a long ways to development of our other parks. So that's really the issue there. So largely the, you know, right now, the, we've, we've kept the parkland dedication section, you know, pretty much the same as what we currently have within the code. But we can, yeah, bring Parks and Rec in to talk about that, to see if we want to make any changes there.
Maybe look at some other cities that have good.
Sure.
Park.
Yeah.
Land examples.
Question?
Yes.
So is the 13, 5, is that a old number or is that a very current number?
Well, it's, it's supposed to be the fair market rate, but it's been that way for quite a long time. So I would have to, I have to get back to you on the answer with that.
Because if it's higher than that now, then, then it's outdated.
Sure, yeah. Next section is stormwater management and conveyance. You know, a lot of, you know, of course, in, in our stormwater requirements now, we require detention and conveyance at the pre-development rate of the land. And so that's going to remain the same. And we just have those in other sections, so we would just be inserting that here and referring to other sections of the code where you can find the, the stormwater runoff information. Inserting a, a portion on preservation of natural drainage courses. So this is just, you know, to the greatest extent possible, existing natural drainage courses should be preserved and incorporated within the development to allow greater opportunities for natural stormwater conveyance and treatment. You know, we've got, you know, that's really our stormwater conveyance system are the creeks and the rivers that run through the city, Paradise Creek, South Fork of the Palouse, Hog Creek. You know, a lot of the, our development drains, you know, naturally into those areas. And, you know, it's with new development, it's always been a council goal is to, you know, keep these drainage courses open. And so we're just stating that within the, this section of the subdivision code. And then the last bit is about stormwater detention facilities. And so, you know, just laying out that they need to be constructed by the developer and then they're owned, operated, and maintained by the city. And then just referring to our existing stormwater runoff control standards, which just states that, you know, it has to be detained at the pre-development rate of the, the land. So really not adding a whole lot of new information there. Utilities and easements right now, these are all, we, we have, you know, requirements from Public Works a lot of the times where we have easements. A lot of it has to do with health concerns, health code requirements. So you have to, if you have a water main and you have a sewer main, they have to have separation distance away from each other so they, you know, you don't have an issue with cross contamination and which would, you know, contaminate the entire system. And so a lot of those are, are requirements that already exist, but we'd be putting those into this section, which talks about utilities and who's responsible for constructing those as part of the subdivision development, who's responsible for maintaining those. In certain circumstances, you know, there may be sewer lift stations or booster stations that may be required. You know, a lot of the times, the developer, it's like with Peekaboo Estates, there needed to be another water booster station up there and the city purchased the lot and they, you know, or ended up building a booster station on that property. And so a lot of the times, you know, if there's anything that needs to go above and, and beyond what you would typically see with a subdivision of the nature that whatever's being proposed, we call those oversizing costs. And then the city picks up the difference between what would normally be required and the increase that they'd want to see there just because of, you know, development or undersized infrastructure in the area. And so we'd just be putting that into this section as well. Utility easements, like I said before, you know, we have a minimum width that these have to be in. And usually the width, you know, has to do with those health requirements, but it also has to do with if it ever fails, you need to get a piece of equipment in there in order to excavate it. And you need a certain width in order to be able to do that. And so these would just be putting Public Works requirements within our, our subdivision The next section is flood hazard areas. So these, you know, it's really just, we have the 100-year floodplain. You know, we need to, to try to accommodate wherever possible and avoid unnecessary construction in the, in the floodplain, just because, you know, it's, it costs everybody money when you have increased development. It costs, you know, people that are building homes that are in the floodplain require elevation as well as carry flood insurance. So really just carrying over what we currently have as far as flood hazard areas in the subdivision code. And required improvements, so these are just, you know, kind of the nitty gritty of laying out who's responsible for all of these things that we currently do. Public improvement, development agreement, security, payment in lieu of public improvements or construction, warranty period for public improvements. So really changing nothing that, that we currently have within the code. You know, payment in lieu of public improvements, so that's if you want to, you know, start construction, but it's, you can't pave the roads right now. You can submit a payment in lieu and you'd be able to, you know, pretty much start that construction and come in at a later date and construct that. And a monumentation agreement, pretty much just laying out what we do now as far as monumentation. A lot of this comes from state code, which requires monumentation. Monumentations are really the corner pins on all, every lot when it changes direction for property lines. You also have street monuments for the, the centers of streets that get platted as well. And then there's the monumentation security. So a lot of those things currently exist within our code and we're just, you know, transferring those to the new proposal. So I did want to, so that kind of ends this section, but I wanted to go into what we've talked about, you know, over the last couple of years about different types of maybe subdivision development. And so, you know, kind of wanted to go through the, just the standard subdivision process that we have now, really encouraging conventional development. You know, if land is platted per zoning standards, it should be approved. And so that's usually the way it's viewed when these things go through, you know, Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council approval. Kind of discourages compact or alternate development methods unless you want to go through a planned unit development process, which in years past, that's what we've seen with a lot of these creative developments that want smaller lot sizes, want reduced setbacks. They've all gone through the PUD process in order to achieve that. Really, that's the system that we've set up right now. That requires time. You also have the, you know, kind of substantial upfront investment without knowing for sure that, you know, the subdivision PUD would be approved. So you have some uncertainty a little bit with the outcome. So we're just thinking about, you know, maybe ways we can provide alternate development methods just by right without going through the PUD. I mean, you'd still have to go through the subdivision plat in order to plat the lots and the streets and, and the parkland. But, you know, maybe we could try to remove some of those barriers for some of the compact development that we don't have to go through a PUD. And so, you know, looking at kind of the, the standard models that you've seen, traditional neighborhood development. Traditional is more of, you know, smaller streets with alleys behind them. Clustered development is maybe you're trying to preserve an area that has a natural feature. Maybe there's a creek that runs through there. Plan development is, you know, what we do now as far as getting those smaller lot. Usually there's something you're looking to achieve, you know, where you give density bonuses, you know, in exchange for these smaller lot sizes. Maybe it's affordable housing you want to include. Maybe it's more open space. Maybe it's green building, you know? We, currently with our planning and developing code, we give bonuses for all those right now. And this, you know, maybe isn't appropriate for us, transit oriented development. That's usually increasing density around transit stations. You know, we have a bus network here and so we could possibly look at doing something like that, although we don't have that many transit stops. And the majority of the transit stops we do have are in a lot of commercial areas. And so usually you have transit oriented development, maybe if you have a light rail system in your community. But being so small, I don't know if that would be, you know, something worthwhile to look at. So looking at, you know, residential development options, you know, trying to create incentives for compact development with greater certainty for the outcome. Legislate standards of desired development to provide assurance of development approvals. Traditional neighborhood development, so we've got kind of the grid system, rear loaded, modest scale, you know, proximity to the street, possible inclusion of neighborhood scale, commercial services. Clustered, you know, we kind of talked about that. You know, there's something you're trying to preserve, so you're reducing the lot sizes in order to preserve kind of this open space or sensitive areas. PUD, you know, maybe similar to traditional, but include desirable community features within elements, so bonus density categories within the PUD code. So we've got common open space, mixed housing types, preservation of natural features, recreational facilities, sustainable development, street and path connectivity, landscaping, and affordable housing that are included right now. Transit oriented development, so it's just looking at kind of those higher intensity uses along transit corridors. Usually see it on light rail systems. You know, you need to identify future service routes, I think would be the big thing for us. You know, if our bus system is, is going to expand, that we need to identify where that was likely to expand. And so we could plan ahead for, you know, what areas would be eligible there. Could be infill bonus for sites near existing service. So, you know, looking at kind of those four development options by right, conventional, clustered, traditional, or planned. clustered, traditional, or planned, um, you know, each option has specific development dimensional standards, so that's what we'd have to work out, you know, right now it's per zone. And so that just assumes that you're going through a, a standard traditional subdivision development, and you have, as long as you meet all the minimum lot sizes and widths, you know, the subdivision's approved. Um, you know, what, how do we define clustered or traditional? You know, what elements can it contain? You know, what, looking at the lot size, setback requirements, densities, you know, it's probably going to require us to define those depending upon what development form, you know, we look at.
So Mike, I just have a question. In terms of, um, clustered development, I guess I've always heard of it, I mean, you know, there's clustered development, but also open space subdivisions or conservation subdivisions where, would be like the golf course community, except instead of the golf course, it's actually a shared open space of a natural system or ecosystem. And, um, I guess that's, that would fit, so that you can put houses together, the number of streets is a lot less because you're not trying to go to every single house, your number, your street lengths end up 50% of what they would in a conventional subdivision if you look at Rand Lawrence's work or others. And I, I'm just wondering whether what I'm talking about is fitting what you're talking about with clustered, because clustered to me seems like it's compact development, but you don't necessarily have open space with it.
Um, no, I mean, we're talking about, I'm talking about what you're talking about. So I, I've got, yeah, I've kind of got some examples here, I'll show you in a minute, but.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're looking at, yeah, preserving kind of those natural features, sensitive areas. Um, so, you know, kind of structuring it to create incentives for these things, you know, in development yield. So, I mean, these would be kind of the things we'd look at, you know, we have the bulk and dimensional standards table, you know, it would probably be looking at adding on, you know, clustered, traditional, you know, we'd have to figure out how we'd include, you know, all those and, and define kind of all those setbacks and, and lot sizes and widths, uh, building height, you know, if there's a way we could do that, or, you know, maybe it's a percentage system, you know, it seemed like it might be easier to do a percentage, but, so this is kind of the development option scenarios that, you know, you could envision. So this is, uh, I think, uh, either D or, I think it's F Street right here, so looking at kind of this, you know, property, I think it's just got a single-family home on it right now. But you look at, you know, typical conventional lot development, um, there's your single-access point right there. And, uh, so it's, yeah, it's just, you know, your, your standard lots, um, with the street, you know, more of a grid network, you've got your open space there, you know, there's 32 lots, um, 3.3 dwelling units per acre, so this is probably the standard, you know, you can see the lot sizes here, they're range between probably 7,000 and 9,000, 10,000 square feet. Um, net density's 4.18. So the net density is essentially just taking out the streets and just looking at the lot sizes themselves, um, and open space is 6%. So, you know, we've got a floodplain that goes through that area, so we've got Paradise Creek that, that comes down from, um, you know, the northeast corner of the city, and Mountain View Park, you know, heads south, so this would be the, you know, represent the hundred-year floodplain. So it's always been a goal to try to keep this development, you know, outside of the floodplain and, and use the floodplain area for, you know, open space recreational. This would be an example of what, you know, you could do with the clustered development instead of this traditional development where you have, you know, six, seven homes that are going to be located in the hundred-year floodplain, and you've got your standard park that people want, you know, that, that maybe the developer wants to site over there. Um, this would be the clustered model where you have, um, you know, maybe a little bit more meandering streets, you have a lot smaller lot sizes that are kind of clustered, you know, in this vicinity away from the hundred-year floodplain. Um, you know, you can see the hundred-year floodplain goes through there, and a lot of it's just encompassed within the, the green space area. You end up increasing the lots, you know, by allowing, you know, open space, you end up reducing the number of lots, um, or increasing the number of lots that the developer's able to, to yield, you know, it increases the dwelling units per acre, and also increases the open space. So it's, it's kind of a win-win as far as the developer getting more lots, but also increasing the amount of open space that you're able to preserve as far as, as that model.
Mike, a quick question. So, um, so you mentioned the meandering streets and that kind of a thing, but so at some point, does net density reach a point where it's clustered versus the one before? Or is it other, other factors involved?
I think it'd be, you know, we'd have to define that, um, and that, yeah, I mean, that'd be part of this. I think we'd look at a, a, you know, for clustered development, you know, you'd look at a, maybe a percentage of open space that you'd be preserving, um, and then, you know, a percentage of increase as far as, you know, maybe a reduction in lot sizes or a number of lots that you're able to yield. But, yeah, I mean, that, that would be the, the big thing for us is how we define clustered and traditional and, you know, and, um, you know, because it's the, really the intent is to, you know, you're going through the subdivision process, you say that, well, I'm going to do a clustered development, and it should be all laid out in the code where as long as you meet all those requirements, you don't have to go through a PUD. You know, you'd just be going through the standard subdivision code, just stating that, you know, it's a clustered subdivision that you'd be proceeding with, but.
Along that lane, uh, this predated you, Mike, but we had Rand Laurent come out here and actually work with city council, this was 15 or more years ago, and we did, we actually did a, um, oh, some land out, uh, sort of on the backside of the sheep pens as you come around, I'm trying to remember the name of this, the area, but it was a typical Palouse Hills kind of wheat place. Um, and we, we had an all-day charrette looking at, at these different scenarios on that, and it was, it was pretty interesting. So I have a couple of, I, I've known him for a long time, so I have a couple of his books, and maybe that would be a good, some of the graphics are really good, we could do a shared reading to really show what a clustered development can be.
Sure.
Or the different scenarios and kind of what the process is. It's, you know, because he designs it for, uh, the, you know, the layperson to come into a workshop and be able to figure out what it's about. And I, so I think it's pretty accessible.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, how the rest of you feel.
Yeah, it's good. Was this along the same lines as what you were envisioning or something different?
Yeah, yeah, kind, I mean, in a way, usually there, the sub, I mean, they weren't trying to protect, the wetlands might be in the middle of the property and you have kind of a more central access for everybody than this would be.
Sure, sure.
It seems like it's more conventional when you get on the back, on the east side of what's drawn there, but, but, you know.
Yeah, it is. I mean, it transitions to, yeah, and I think it, I, I think the, you know, whole goal where we were trying to portray here was just that, um, you know, preservation of this, you know, riparian area, open space over here, and then, um, you know, but, yeah, I mean, the, it may be transitions, maybe it doesn't.
Well, and a lot of times it's the open space that drives it, it's, that's the shared amenity of the neighborhood. And then the lots are all enjoying that, so they don't have to be, you know, as big.
Well, the whole goal is we're, you know, trying to incentivize the preservation of this area, and how do we do that?
Right.
We allow the developer to get more lots out of the deal, right?
Right, right, exactly. And that's what he shows, is the difference, um, between conventional subdivision planning. And also that you reduce, in a lot of cases, you reduce the, uh, uh, number of feet of street, so the infrastructure costs are lower too.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Um, and then just, you know, looking at kind of the standard traditional, you know, this would be, um, you know, you'd have your main streets here and here, and then you have alleys, um, that would re-load some of these, you know, it looks like this would probably be, you know, maybe just my arterials or collector streets, and then it'd go down to a less of a standard, and maybe this would just be, um, you know, more of a drive that it would access those lots and, and trying to think about, you know, allowing more traditional-type development that's just been, you know, always been attractive, and I, you know, it's been probably my, um, the development form that I, you know, I've liked the most over the years, and I think it adds a lot of benefit and community, uh, to those areas. But you could look at something like this, you know, with also preservation of, um, you know, the open space and the riparian area along the creek, and, you know, it could achieve the same thing through, you know, more of a traditional pattern. You know, a lot of it depends on the grade of the property as well, you know, it may work better with more of a cluster where you're following, you know, maybe the natural topography with the streets, you know, a lot of times that'd be, you know, kind of the issue around here is that just with the topography, you have an issue with, um, a lot of the traditional development and, and the grades of our streets and everything not being able to achieve that. So this is just, you know, kind of a recap, um, you know, looking at maybe the variation in lot sizes, the number of lots that you yield, um, kind of the net developable area, you know, I think the big thing here is kind of the increase in open space. You know, you're all, all pretty similar in the net developable area, but the increase in open space and the number of lots, you know, go up, uh, depending upon what, you know, development option you're looking at. So, you know, it's, it's trying to look at incorporating some of these development forms.
Right, no, that's, I, I didn't know that's where we were going, and I think that's great.
Yeah, I like it as, I like it as well. I just want to remind, uh, I want to go back to our discussion a little earlier. You've looked at three, uh, you, all these are good developments, but notice that, um, the least number of access points is four, and you never get up to 60, uh, you, you have 50 or less, you know, units and you have four, so that, that one access point for 60 just flies in the face of reality. Here you are doing what I think is just a commendable, uh, example of ways that could be developed, and each one of them has a validity, but the very least number of access points was four for 40 units. So I, I think I, I just would exhort you to take a peek at that, figure back the.
Sure.
You know, and we, we see that when you do add something, just a, a really, a nice little development, we don't want to encourage somebody to have less connectivity than, than.
Well, just have them put a guardhouse with a gate, you know, on the avenue.
But here, my gosh, you've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, you've got eight, uh, eight access points on this one right here, so, you know, uh, anyway, I just want to.
Sure.
Take me back to that discussion again.
Yeah.
This is good, Michael.
Yeah, it's great.
I really like these comparisons.
Yeah, it's nice.
So I think that's, you know, if, if everybody's comfortable with that, I think we'll keep exploring that and then going through, um, some, maybe some other different options. I mean, we've talked a little bit about cottage housing, which is kind of similar to, you know, maybe.
Yeah, it would be kind of clustered in a lot of, or a small.
Doing, doing some, you know, maybe that as a development option as well, you know, just trying to get, get away from, uh, you know, the PUD product, I mean, which is still a, a good process, but, uh, getting away from that a little bit to allow, you know, build some of this stuff into the code and allow it by, by right, so.
Well, then it would enable developers to see the path easily that, by right, rather than having to go.
Yeah, well, they wouldn't have the upfront cost, they wouldn't be locked in to, you know, coming back and try, I mean, think of all the PUDs, we've had to come back and try to amend multiple times. I mean, I can think of some that we've amended six times, um, just because they wanted to change something, you know, something small, so, um, I, you know, I.
Yeah, that's great.
So, Mike, that, that brings up a point, because not all that long ago, we were doing an amendment to a PUD, and we talked about this issue. So what you're saying is that if we incorporate that by right as opposed to having PUD as something separate, we wouldn't have to go back and do that, those amendments, is that?
Yeah, what I'm saying is that if, you know, this is, this would be incorporated in our subdivision code, so you wouldn't have to go through a PUD in, in order to achieve some of these development patterns. And so what that would mean is you don't have to, you know, go back and, I mean, if you just build it and it meets all the requirements of the code, then you don't have to come back and, and you want to change something. Usually the PUD.
To amend, that's already, yeah, right.
The PUD's pretty locked in. I mean, you state where you're putting the buildings, how tall they, what they look like, and if you want to change any of that, um, you know, you have a little bit of a process to go through and, and amend it.
I think it would inspire more creativity.
Yeah, it's like, kind of like best practices, a concept, where you assist development and, uh, because I, I, even though, um, I, I, some days, people seem to be surprised, you know, I certainly am a pro-development guy. I want to make good development easier for the people that do the developing, so, because that's the future of our, our city, really, rather than trying to make more ways to have to stumble along the way. And it always has seemed a little bit strange to have to, uh, little tiny changes and you have to come back and, and talk about some change that you couldn't have imagined was going to happen as you put the, because almost every development, every subdivision development goes through several lives before it gets done.
Yeah.
This is good.
Yeah. So is that pretty much what you have for this section?
Yeah, that's all I, yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, so, item eight, area city impact agreement.
So, you know, this is the area city impact agreement, and so we've been, um, in 2015, the, uh, Latah County, uh, had worked with the city, requested that we enter into renegotiation to the area city impact, and at the time, um, we were going through some, you know, or starting, uh, some of the, the zoning code amendments as well as the comp plan update. And so we wanted to wait until we ended up, you know, getting done with those things before we ended up formally renegotiating, so they agreed to, to put that off. And so now that we've largely, you know, gone through the process of updating the zoning code with the land use table and the off-street parking standards, and we're almost to the end of the comp plan update, um, we're just looking at, um, updating the area city impact agreement. And so I've got a little bit of background, um, just so, you know, some of you that might, may not be as familiar with the requirements of the area city impact agreements, um, really kind of comes from the beginning. Idaho Code requires establishment of area city impact, including adoption of comp plan and land use ordinances to apply within the area. You know, usually you have the geographic area, and it's usually generally guided by kind of the trade area, geographical factors, as well as, uh, looking at the areas that we typically expect to be annexed into the city, uh, at some point in the future. Um, and then it really allows flexibility as far as what comp plans and what ordinances you adopt, um, within the area city impact. So it could be the county's plan and ordinances, uh, it could be the city's plan and the ordinances, or it could be other plans and ordinances, uh, as long as both jurisdictions agree on So the governing boards are required to review area city impact, so our governing board would be city council, um, every 10 years to determine if renegotiation is in the best in, interest of the citizenry. So last time, um, our current agreement is from 2006, and so that's when in 2015, we were looking at updating it, um, and now it's been put off until now, until we get these things done, and, and now we're proceeding with it. But mutually-agreed negotiations can follow any process and timeframe, this may, uh, be mutually agreeable between the two parties, so it gives us flexibility there. So this is, you know, kind of give a history about when we first got our first area city impact agreement. We first started discussing this, I think, with ordinance 1402, which was passed on November 5th, 1979. This was shortly after Local Land Use Planning Act was stipulated by Idaho statutes, and the city ordinance and not a mutually, uh, adopted agreement in response to state requirement passed in, in 1977. Discuss purpose and intent, establish geographic boundary, comp plan, zoning ordinance. Discuss purpose and intent, establish geographic boundary, comp plan, zoning ordinance to be jointly adopted in the future, Leita County comp plan, zoning to apply if not mutually adopted. Series of discussions of the next cascade with no mutually adopted comp plan or zoning code, and so sounds like it was in limbo until then. And then they mutually adopted the area city impact agreement, really almost the first one, by the city and the county in 1993, and that was after several years of work by the area city impact committee. They adopted city codes within the ACI, required city to adopt county ag forest zone, and the decision-making authority was delegated to the city by the county. So the city ended up making the ultimate decision. And then the similar boundary to the 1979 ordinance as far as the area city impact. So we come to 2000, we had a Idaho Supreme Court case, Blaha versus Eagle City Council, where they were doing something similar to what we were doing at the time, where the county was delegating authority to the city in order to approve the area city impact. What that court case said was cities cannot have extraterritorial authority, it's advisory only, so we can't regulate what happens in the county. You know, it's still out in the county even though it's the area city impact, and so counties have to have the ultimate authority. We can just be advisory, we can just give a recommendation to the county. And so that's what that Supreme Court case established in 2000. And so I believe we ended, ended up being sued, and Leita County and the city of Moscow entered into a revised interim area city impact agreement after portions of the 1993 agreement were deemed unconstitutional by the district court. And then, so we, I think, declared a moratorium there, had the revised agreement, and then we followed that up on January of 2004. We executed a renegotiated area city impact agreement there. And then in 2006, the city requested a few different updates. There were some ordinances that were adopted since then, and so that's our current area city impact agreement was from 2006. We increased, I think there was, you know, in the agreement, it turns out where you lay out a number of days that the city needs to get back to the county as far as a recommendation. It used to be 14, I believe, and so, yeah, 14, so they increased that to 23. I think it was just too tight of a time period, and so they increased that. And then there are a couple other ordinances that they ended up adopting. I think one was, had to do with educational institutions actually, required as a conditional use permit. I think that that was one of the ordinances that got amended in the area city impact So, yeah, December 13th, so we had the renegotiated agreements approved, and it's the current agreement. So looking at the 26, 2006 agreement, so right now, our adopted codes, we have the city's 1999 comp plan, so that's, you know, what we're going off of, because, you know, as we go through these rezones, like what happened tonight, we're still on the 1999 comp plan. Zoning at the time, so it was the city's zoning code, city subdivision code, mobile home and RV park ordinances. And keep in mind, these are really snapshots of what they were in 2006. So all the amendments that we've had to the zoning code, you know, aren't incorporated here. It's just whatever the zoning code was at the time of the agreement, and so that's why we're still operating off of those. Ordinances 2005-33 and 2005-04, that had to deal with the educational institutions being a conditional use permit inserted in the code, so that's what those were added. And then it lays out the process for various requests, so if you have quasi-judicial actions, you know, lays out that planning and zoning has to conduct a public hearing and make a recommendation to the county. Lays out the process for, you know, administrative requests, so if there's a house being constructed in the area city impact, you know, lays out the process for forwarding it down to the city, and then the city makes a recommendation, forwards it back up to the county. Also inspections and complaints. If we receive a complaint in the area city impact, city is required to investigate, report back to the county, and then we usually jointly work on a resolution to the complaint. So this is what I've, you know, kind of gone over before. We had the city-county joint meeting to negastre renegotiation. Wanted to wait till the zoning code and comp plan updates were completed. So that brings us to current, you know, present day. So we ended up starting to work with the county a few months ago on drafting an amendment to the agreement in the fall, after significant zoning code amendments were approved and comp plan updates nearing completion. And so we're looking at, you know, I've attached the proposed draft agreement tonight, but we'll kind of go through the highlights of that. So we're looking at the codes to adopt, so of course, the city's comprehensive plan is adopted on December 7th, 2009, accepting the land use map. And so really, the 2009, I mean, nothing's changed in the area city impact, so we don't necessarily, you know, I think we're fine with the 2009 plan right now, except for the land use map. And so, you know, we've changed some things. The ring road in the eastern quadrant has been eliminated, and other than that, most of the land use designations have stayed the same. So we'd be attaching the updated 2018 comp plan land use map to the, to the agreement is what we'd be doing there. City subdivision, mobile home and RV park ordinances with a modification. We wouldn't have a fee in lieu of provision that would be available in the area city impact, so it really just wouldn't be available within the area city impact. And the city's zoning ordinance with the following modifications. I think we, in the agreement right now, we've adopted the county's nonconformity section, so it gives a little bit of more flexibility with some of these homestead properties that allow for multi-generational living. So there was, I think, a request that we reviewed a few years ago on Yeoman's Lane that they had, I think, a couple houses out there. They're proposing to tear one down, they wanted to rebuild another one. Right now, under our code, the only way you could, you know, rebuild for a nonconforming law would be if it burned down by a fire, you know, was destroyed by a natural disaster. So they wanted to be a little bit more lenient, and we didn't necessarily see an issue with that. It just allowed for kind of that multi-generational living, you know, in more of a rural setting. So we've already got that, so we would just be using their nonconformity section like we do now. Flood hazard areas, we figured that, you know, they, they would, should be kind of the authority for flood hazard areas out in the area city impact. They actually have, they're more restrictive for the flood hazard areas than we are in the city, so they, they wanted kind of authority for the flood plain. Planning and developments deleted. We really didn't see a need to have PUDs. I mean, if you're going to have a PUD out in the area city impact, we want you to annex into the city and get connected to city services and have the roadway system extended, so didn't really see a need for providing the option for a PUD. And then the sign code has changed a little bit with some amendments. Usually you don't deal with a sign code out there because it's primarily residential, and you don't need signs for residential development. City's animal and fowl, so this is, you know, this goes along with our urban agricultural land, and so this has always been at odds a little bit in the area city impact, because you look at developments on Carmichael Road, and right now in the area city impact, they're not allowed to keep horses, or goats, or sheep, or fowl, and, but we allow that in the city. So, I mean, it's, it seems opposite that you're, as you transition into a more rural nature, you're allowed to, or you're a lot more restricted as far as the number of animals that you can keep than if you were in the city. So this is kind of rectifying that situation and having them adopt our animals and fowl regulations, which is in, actually, the police regulations in our code. And then we would adopt the county's agricultural forestry zone with the following amendments. And so if you think about the area city impact, predominantly, the area is zoned ag forest right now, and so that's really the zone that would apply. They have a number of allowed uses. We would want to delete salvage, wrecking, and junk yards occurring outside of a fully enclosed building, so they have that as a conditional use permit. And so I don't think we want a salvage, wrecking, or junkyard that close to the city limits, and so we'd propose to amend that. And then animal husbandry, and all of the uses normally associated with raising, feeding, selling of livestock as a permitted use. So we wouldn't necessarily be deleting that. I think right now, it allows up to 250 animal units. We'd want to reduce that to maybe 50, so that'd still allow for, you know, kind of that, those agricultural animal raising uses, but I think 250 animal units would be too large to have in that close a proximity to the city, so we'd have kind of agreed to go down to 50 animal units on that. And then, right now, there was an amendment that they ended up changing a few years ago that reduced their ag forest zone in order to allow more development in the county, and they reduced it from 40 acre minimum lot size in ag forest down to 10. We had some concerns with that, mainly when we had the joint council, county meeting that what that was going to do as far as the kind of subdivision around the city and our ability to have our subdivisions be annexed and expanded in a logical and orderly fashion. And so we've thought that we would keep our current 40 acre minimum lot size requirement. There is a, you know, so this is pretty much what we have right now in our ag forest zone is 40 acre minimum lot size. You're eligible, if you have a parcel that's over 40 acres, you're eligible for one division, and you're able to keep a, you're able to divide a parcel of at least one acre in size. So say you had a parcel and it was 42 acres in size, well, you'd be eligible for one division, and you could divide off one parcel from that. It could be an acre in size, and you'd be left with maybe a 41 acre parcel. And so that's what we, what we currently have right now. They do have a section that they, you know, we ended up liking from their code, so, you know, it talks about the small parcel and remnant parcel shall have a designated building site that's no larger than two acres, where all residential structures shall be placed. This is kind of clustering of these in order to preserve, you know, some of that farmland. Then the building site and all structures shall be placed in a manner to preserve productive farmland, streams, riparian areas, and other unique natural features, allow for logical extension of existing and planned roadways, and to ensure that natural resources are protected and the city of Moscow can grow in an efficient, logical, and orderly manner. And so, excuse me, that's really what, you know, our intent in area city impact with the ag forest zone and citing of properties is to make sure that our roadway network is still going to be expanded, and the city's going to be able to grow in kind of that logical and orderly manner. So we've inserted that within this ag forest zone. And then, of course, you know, like we talked about before, the county's nonconforming use ordinance, flood plain ordinance, and design standards. I guess we didn't talk about design standards. The county wanted to, since they, we really don't have driveway design standards. We have standards for those driveways going into the public street, but as far as the driveways, you know, in the county are a lot larger and longer, and so, you know, they have standards for those, that they be a certain width, and they'd be gravelled, and they would like to keep that within the area city impact like they do in the county, and so it'd be keeping what they have with the driveway design standards for their area. So that would be it. What we're looking at is the county planning commission. They're taking a look at tentatively planning to conduct a public hearing December 4th, 2018, so this next month. So I figure what we would do is to review this again at the commission meeting at the end of November, and then possibly go to public hearing for a recommendation onto city council, our first meeting in December, and so we could forward this on to the council. And then they would have to, you know, the council would have to conduct a public hearing, and the board of county commissioners would as well, and then that would be the final adoption process.
So we would also do a public hearing?
We would.
Yeah.
Yeah. The state code requires the, the planning and zoning commission make a recommendation onto the content of the agreement, onto the governing board, which would be city council, so. You have any questions about?
We should probably go. I'm embarrassed to say that I've never gone to a county planning and zoning meeting and...
You want to go and report back to us?
Yeah. I just had a conversation with the chair of the commission, but I'm thinking that we had more disagreements a few years ago, but I'm thinking maybe it's not, I think that's improved.
Yeah, we have an excellent working relationship with Leita County, just staff, but I, yeah, I can't speak for the elected officials, but.
I'm embarrassed to say, I don't know, it used to be Gerard Billington, but I don't know who their planner is. Who's their planner?
Well, Mari was here earlier, so she was the gal that had to leave.
Oh, okay.
Mari Notts, their senior planner. She's kind of their equivalent, me up there. And Michelle Fuson is the director.
Okay, yeah, I guess I didn't know her there. Okay. All right, is that all you have on that item?
Yeah.
Okay, so item nine is the future continuing education discussion, and we've talked about parkland requirements as a topic, having somebody from Parks and Rec maybe come and talk to us as a beginning, and then maybe the, well, there is, yeah, I don't know, or maybe also somebody from Parks and Rec's commission in addition to Dwight?
Yeah, I could reach out to Dwight and see what he would.
Yeah, recommend?
Yeah, recommend.
Okay, and that would be one, and then I would recommend, I can put together some materials on conservation subdivisions or clustered subdivisions as one of the, and there's, it seems like we need to educate ourselves a bit on some of that.
Well, and it's relevant to what we're just talking about, so that's great.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other items there?
One question, this last item. So Mike, we'll talk about the agreement again at the next meeting, but are we, is that the meeting we're also going to have to conduct the public hearing?
No, it'll be the following meeting. December 12th would be what we have.
Oh, that's, okay.
Right now queued up, so, yeah, if you wanted to, you know, think about that a little bit and go through it again, and then we could talk about it, yeah, we'll talk about it again next meeting, and then the following meeting, we can hold a public hearing.
Okay, I was reading the city council on December 12th, so, okay, great.
Yeah, I was confused with that too, so thank you for asking that. All right, any other?
Just a couple of quick things.
Yes.
So I CC'd all of you this evening on my correspondence with Dwight. So Mia and Gary, so the city attorney and the city supervisor, were also on that communication, so just giving them a heads up that you'll probably be reaching out, and then you can just see the brief correspondence that we had about this topic.
Great.
So a little extra info, hopefully. And then, so sorry for the sidebar earlier this evening with Mike looking into the website. So in my opinion, it's not very obvious that we're collecting input online. You're about five clicks deep to figure that out, and so I know we're kind of late in the game, but I think having that on the main page would be really helpful, especially because as city councillors, that's one of the, I guess, primary consistent communication that we receive from the community, just better information about that kind of opportunity. So I don't know if you want to look into it, if you want me to tomorrow, but I think it's worth pursuing.
The city news.
Where did you see that, Ann?
It was.
It was?
It disappeared.
Okay, yeah, because I looked through the history and I didn't see anything there either, so just something to think about.
Initially, there was the press release about the open house, and then the next day, they changed it to.
Comment.
Say that it was felled and that there was a comment period.
Okay, that's good to know, because I haven't seen it, and I've looked a couple times in the last couple weeks, so.
But we can't get that.
I know there was a flyer that got sent out with everybody's utility bill that notified everybody of the open comment period too. that notified everybody of the open comment period too, but yeah, we can, we'll, we'll get it squared away on the, on the front.
I just think it's always something to be mindful of, especially again, we received that commentary a lot, so, yeah, that was it for me.
Good, thank you. All right, I think we can say goodnight.
We're done.
Yeah, okay.